Good evening. Thank all of you for being here with us tonight. Today is February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Our thoughtful today. He who is untrue to his own cause cannot command the respect of others. It's Albert Einstein. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. We do have a special guest with us tonight. The pastor of Oxford Baptist Church, Miss Pastor Withall? Is that right? If you will, please come on up, sir. Thank you for being here tonight. If you would, tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us a little bit about your ministry. Pray for our community. And if you will, lead us in our pledge tonight.
I would be honored. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Good evening. Commissioners, some of you I've met, some of you I haven't had the privilege of meeting, but I'm honored to be here. I think it's a very important role for our church and our state to work together even as we are separate, so it's an honor for me to be able to be here. It's an honor for me also to represent citizens of Newton County as a member of Newton County, and so it's a privilege to be able to be here for that. A little bit about me, currently I am the senior pastor at Oxford Baptist Church. Been there for just over two years. My wife and I previously served in the United Kingdom in the country of Wales as missionaries with the Salvation Army for ten years. We had three children, three daughters, and two of them were born over there. Some of the things that I'm really excited about in our community that we are doing in our church are reaching out to our children and young people. This is something that my wife and I are very passionate about, and we are, as a church, we are broadening our ministry to include more provisions for children and young people and for moms particularly. We are beginning to start a group called Moms of Cove, and it's gonna be for young moms with preschool-aged children to have something to do in the week. We're gonna have a kickoff brunch in March, and so lots of things that are going on. I'm very inspired by this thought for the day, I gotta say. And I'll just say it again, he who is untrue to his own cause cannot command the respect of others. My cause is the cause of Jesus Christ, and that is why I am doing what I do. It is a choice that I've made for myself, and I've answered the call, and so I am here for that. You've asked me to pray, I would be happy to pray. I do come with a little bit of bad news, I'm sorry to say. I don't know if you heard this, but the gentleman that invented the hokey pokey passed away today. Yeah, it was a very sad day that they were having some issues trying to get him in his coffin. They would put the right leg in. So we'll pray for his family.
Wow.
And we'll pray for everyone who doesn't realize that was a joke as well. So as I am a firm believer in Jesus Christ, I do wanna pray in that name, and I wanna invite you to pray with me as we begin our time together. Our most gracious and precious heavenly Father, we do give you thanks for the opportunity to gather together as people in this community. Thank you for those who have answered the civic responsibility to lead in matters of state, and thank you for those who are concerned citizens who are here, who are very passionate about the causes that are important to them, and they have come to give their voice on behalf of those causes. Lord, I pray that everything that would occur tonight would be done in a dignified manner, that we would treat one another charitably, and that we would remember with respect that we are all working towards the same cause, and that is the betterment of humanity, particularly here in Newton County. Thank you, Lord, that we do have this great privilege to be here. Myself as a Christian, I thank you for my salvation. I thank you for the person of Jesus Christ, and I thank you how, no matter how much we strive to as human beings to achieve some sort of a perfected state or to make things better, we know that we are ultimately flawed through sin, but we have a Redeemer and we have a Savior, and we have someone who is an advocate for us that fights the cause that we are unable to fight and has offered us promised eternal life in heaven. And I thank you, God, that that is something that we all each have an opportunity to choose to believe for ourselves. It's not something that is forced upon us. You never force your will upon us. You give us the free choice. Otherwise, there would be no love, because without choice, we would not know whether there is a capacity for love. And so, Lord, we all do pursue love for one another and love for our community. Lord, I pray that tonight, everything that is done would honor you, and ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I've also been asked to lead in the pledge, so if you would, join with me in facing the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Pastor, I do wanna say thank you, sir, for all that you do here in our community, and also all that you do overseas as well. Thank you so much. I do have a token of appreciation I wanna present to you. I'll be there in just a second. No, we move on with this. Next, we have the adoption of agendas, Commissioners. There are a couple of things that we need to address. We do need to add, we need to make twelve A. We need to clean up the language for our, for the nonprofit as concerning the churches. That need to be twelve A. Twelve B. We need to clean up the language in our youth commission. It needs to be twelve B. Twelve C. It's the warming center. The warming center, we need to discuss that as well. Twelve D. Twelve D, I think someone, a commissioner wanna apply for a grant. I'm not sure. No, that definitely can't go on the consent agenda, we gotta talk about that. We can talk about it, or we're gonna have to discuss it. It's nothing that can go on the consent agenda.
Okay, cuz.
We don't have the details of a grant.
It was sent to you all in an email. It was forward to the county manager. It was forward to you all a week ago, and that's when the consultant that we hired came in and said that she would meet with my district. It's all in the email.
It is going for discussion or consideration. That's where it needs to go.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else, Commissioners?
Yes, I would like to add the discussion of the, since we now received the news about the West Side Youth Facility, as you stated before, Mr. Chairman, we have to move forward to decide on where it's gonna be located. So I would like to add a discussion on the West Side Youth Facility so we can move forward, because that is the twenty-seventeenth SPOSH, and it is by law required to be built. So we do have two options that are remaining of area location, so we have to figure out how we're gonna move forward so we can build this facility for our youth. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion to be added to the agenda.
Well, first, we don't have two options. What's the two options?
We were presented, at last meeting, we were presented with three locations, and you guys voted on the, one of them.
So actually, they voted down one location.
And the other location wasn't feasible.
One location was redrawn by the person who donated the property. The other location, they just said that they're not going to move forward with that location.
Well, on that location, the reason why is because we didn't go back to the homeowner after they went down from their actual value cost to talk to them to find out, because that land would be feasible to build not only the park that we received in two thousand and twenty-three from SPOSH, it could build a youth facility, it can also build senior services, it can build the ballparks and everything that's needed in that community per our consultant that came before us.
So Commissioner, again, that location was voted down. So, Mr. Turner, would you like to clarify that? If I'm wrong, correct me, please. No, it was voted down. Sir, if you would, would you?
It's up to the chair to add it or not, but ultimately, there's, the board rejected two sites, approved one site. The owner of that site has withdrawn that site from an opportunity to settle the county, so I'm not sure.
And the other site, go ahead and tell us about the other site.
Well, the two sites, the owners withdrew.
Okay, there you go.
So the site the board approved, the owner has withdrawn, and an alternate site the owner has withdrawn.
So how are we gonna move, what is the next step I have to moving forward to finding a location? Because right now, all the locations that are in the, on that area where the most dense part of Newton County have now fallen by the wayside.
So Commissioner, the same process is to take place. The board will have to find locations again and present before the board. It's the same process. It's the same process. You can't, listen, guys, you cannot skip the process. If there's a process in place, y'all, listen, wait a minute.
It's not skipping processes, Mr. Chairman, we're discussing.
Y'all, y'all, you tell me all the time, we need to follow procedure, we need to follow the process.
That's not what I said, Mr. Chairman. I think you taking my words out of context. I just asked, what is gonna be the next step that we're gonna move forward so we can build this facility for the youth? Now that you just stated that those properties were rejected because we are required by the two thousand and seventeen SPOSH and SPOSH law, because the residents voted to build this facility, I'm asking you, in your words, what is gonna be our next step? So you just set a site location. I did not say anything about going over processes.
Okay, that's right. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anything else, guys?
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mrs. C. I guess the question I have is that if Commissioner Sanders made a motion as far as maybe to revisit or whatever, and if she received a second, then we would have to take up either say yeah or nay. And that's the process, or part of the process that we go through when a commissioner, whoever he or she may be, if I may continue, please, whoever he or she may be, is process that we adopted when you didn't give a commission the ability to put on the agenda?
First of all, sir, the process is that we make a motion to amend the agenda. That hasn't been done. You made a motion to add that on the agenda?
I apologize to the residents, we were talking off mic. I said, yeah, I make a motion to add to the consent agenda, and also mentioned, we first talked about the grant, and then you say you have to add it on discussion. Then I said I want to make a motion to add on for the West Side Youth Facility as a discussion, and you said no.
I'll tell you what. I'm gonna amend the agenda before we even get going, and we're gonna do this at the first part of the meeting. Absolutely. It's been a motion made by Commissioner Sanders that we amend the agenda and add this to the agenda. We're gonna do it all in one motion. That's been, is motion made by Commissioner Sanders to amend the agenda and add, what is it, is it the location? What is it?
Discussion of the West Side Youth Facility.
Discussion of the West Side Youth Facility to the agenda, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Henderson, is that correct?
I haven't seconded it, but I seconded it.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess I'm trying to understand, because staff hasn't had an opportunity to actually go back and find additional locations, so I guess I'm trying to understand why we are wanting to discuss it if we haven't allowed staff the opportunity to go back and find more locations. If the three sites that we originally had, one was voted down, the second one, the applicant withdrew, and I guess the third, when the applicant withdrew. So that means that we don't have any site to even discuss. So I guess where I'm confused at, why would we actually have a discussion when we don't have, staff hasn't presented us with any sites? So I guess that's where my discussion is.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, sir. Have we, since the location has been drawn, the property that was supposedly supposed to be donated to us, has there been given a directive for staff to move forward? Doesn't that have to come from the board, or that comes from the county manager? So if the property that we all voted on, that wasn't a part of the county property, we voted to place the West Side Youth Facility on the Addison property, that came from the board. So for the staff to move forward, doesn't that have to come from the board, or does that come from the county manager for a site? So what is, that's why I asked for a discussion, because we need to know what is the next process, so we're just not allowing something to lay dormant. Does that directive have to come from a vote from the board of commissioners, or is our county manager telling staff, our project manager, who is Jeff, to move forward with another site location? We have not discussed it since we had the property projected from us. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the board needs to vote to authorize staff to do that. I think.
So that comes from a directive of the county manager to tell staff to move forward? So that had to be a discussion, because we never talked about it, and I'm pretty sure our interim county manager have not given staff that directive to move forward to find additional land.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mrs. C. You know, I've been here for a while, and I'm trying to understand, why is it that we can't come together on a few million dollars, and we spend millions of dollars all over this county for some kids in an underserved area to have a decent playground? And we got one over, we got Terna, we got Cedar Pond, we got Ternal Lake, we got one over in District Two, whereas I was the person who named the Denny Dawes, since I've been on the board so long. I was the person who went out and helped look at and purchase the property for it. So why is it that we can't do something over in District for those kids? They need it. Kids are killing peoples every day, and we sitting back and doing nothing. Something wrong with that picture. And it should be something, it should be the peoples of Newton County who care about our kids, care about our seniors, should wanna help someone in that part of town to help them.
All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Ms. Chairman, I have one more to change on that. Ms. Chairman, before we take a vote on the change in the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Item eight, dealing with the strategic plan, I'd like to remove that from the agenda to a later date. There were some concerns that I have regarding the bidding process and the award, and the award process. I'd like to have some opportunity to discuss that with Brittany and make sure that we've did that correctly.
Is there a second?
Is that in the form of a motion to?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to take off the.
No, no, he asked for a motion to remove this off the agenda.
Right.
Is there a second? It's been, okay, it's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? No, he wanted to take it off the agenda. He made a motion to take it off the agenda. Yes.
You don't need to specify the day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just, if Commissioner Cowan can expound on what the reasonings are, because I know the last discussion we had was, we didn't possibly need to pay the funding for, maybe because the person who did it the first time can possibly come back and edit it. So I know that was some of your concerns last time, so you can expound on what the concerns were?
Well, I think for the purposes of this public meeting, I'd really like to discuss those with Brittany first to make sure there was no impropriety done, so I really don't wanna discuss that in a public meeting.
Yes, sir. All in favor? Any opposed? If it passes, we will remove the item.
Only a station, just kind of go after reading why.
Why are you abstaining, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As we all know, and I just wanna be clear for people, they're trying to get smart or something, when a commissioner abstains, what that means is he has to give a reasoning for abstaining. And my reason for abstaining is because my good friend, Ronnie Cowan, and we are friends, wanted to change something, and yet I did not know the details. And so I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I don't know little and nothing about the reason why it's being changed. Thank you, Mr. C.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda as it states, please. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Pass at five oh. Next is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity, we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics, agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Guys, we do have zoning at approximately seven thirty, so if you're making comments and we need to stop, we will stop and go to zoning and come back to you. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep. At the last meeting, you said a general item, so you brought up the West Side. So I wanna ask this question. When y'all took a vote to go to, for the Board and Guild Club to go to Treelander, then y'all take a vote with three, three properties at that particular time, then y'all say y'all, y'all gonna pick, pick one out of the three?
Sir, I hate to interrupt you, but we have to be agenda topics only at the first.
You, wasn't that, generally, then you have that on the topic just then?
No, sir, it's not on here.
Okay. I just don't understand y'all.
Thank you, sir. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Wow. Agenda, okay. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only, you have three minutes to do so.
My name is Edginese Martin Lackey, fifteen eighty-five Mole Road, Covington, Georgia. I'm concerned about the roundabout, I don't, on eighty-one and one sixty-two connector, Lover's Lane. I don't think we need four gas stations in one roundabout. I've never seen four gas stations in one roundabout. I think we need like grocery stores, restaurants, something like that at the roundabout, other than four gas stations. That's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, we, guys, we, guys, I want you to refrain from clapping, please. Thank you. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes, agenda topics only.
And then Austin, four twenty Treelander Circle. My agenda item is the comment, citizens' comments, that are always at the end of the agenda. I believe they should be closer to the beginning of the agenda as opposed to the end of the agenda, and I'm also with the citizens for concern, Newton County citizens, and I'm just seriously concerned about the fact that we had to wait three and a half hours last week in order for us to make comments. That needs to be moved up further in the agenda. That needs to be changed, and you can change that. You had the power to do it, so we're asking you to do that. Don't torment, torture your constituents by making them wait to the end of, to the end of the meeting to make comments. They're here now.
Guys, please refrain from clapping. Guys, this is a business meeting, please.
So we'd like you to address that. It is an agenda item, it's at the end of the agenda, and it should be closer to the beginning as opposed to the end.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Carla Baines, forty-two fifteen Mole Road. I have a concern about all the mud that they are tracking on Lower River Road. It's a lot of mud, and I don't understand why. You know, we get our cars washed or whatever, and when we get to the end of Lower River Road, where they taking their trucks in and out, there's mud everywhere. Now, I drive trucks myself, and we are required to have either a truck wash where you get ready to come out, or either they have someone washing the tires, but it is entirely too much mud at the end of that road.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Next on the agenda is, we're so close to, I hate to go into the chairman's report and then we. Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Shannon, if you would, please come on up. I wanna take opportunity to go on our zoning tonight. Shannon, thank you for being here tonight. I know we have, I think we have like six cases tonight. Is that, that's all?
That's our old business.
Thank you so much. Our county attorney said that we can move forward with.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. Our first case this afternoon, it is one of our older cases. It's REZ. Yeah, sorry, REZ twenty-two dash zero 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 one three. And just to recap briefly, it is located at three seventy-five Flat Rock Road. It's a request to rezone from A to M two. This was tabled at the last BOC meeting for nine today's, and today, which is supposed to be presented today, however, the applicant is requesting that it be tabled until June because they're going through a rezoning process in the city on an adjacent parcel. So that is the request before the board today for this case.
I'm sorry, said.
That would be the request today for the board for this case.
Guys, I seek a motion, please.
Yes, to table it until June as requested by.
Mr. Chairman, I had a call from Mr. Johansson today. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the name, but he would like to continue this till June.
Yes, sir.
June meeting, okay. Yeah, we need to table that. We need to make it from a motion.
A second, thank you. It's a motion by Commissioner Cowan to table this and seconded by Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you for staying tabled.
Yeah, you're right. I read that. I thought that said flash.
Okay, Chairman, our second case this evening is also old business. It is a modification, MOD twenty-two dash zero 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 two. And I'm just gonna recap briefly. This has come before us in October, December, January, and again today, and it has been tabled or extended for various reasons, including gathering more information from the community. And the proposal is to modify the conditions of zoning from an older case, MOD eleven dash zero 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 one three eight, by substituting the site plan for condition number two, which references the preliminary site plan associated with the proposed landscape business that was to be done there, as well as to remove conditions three D, which limits the hours of operation from seven AM to eleven PM, and condition three E, which requires the maintenance of a seventy-five-foot tree line along Shepherd's Lane. of a seventy-five foot tree line along Shepherd's Lane. And again, they're just requesting to modify those two conditions. Um, they will be locating, the, the request is also to locate the gas station there, which is an allowable use. And it was tabled just to gather more information. And, um, unless the board wishes, I probably, I won't go through everything again. It's in your, um, staff packets. And our applicant is here in case there are any additional questions.
We already had a public hearing.
We have, sir, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I think this is in District, um, four.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you. Uh, this is one that, um, we had, uh, thought about, and we actually went out into the community, in fact, yesterday. And, uh, or handing out flyers too as well to the people in, who, in District Four who would be affected. Went to the service stations, right across the street, and I talked to the gentleman who owned the two service stations. What they said was, he's not going to hurt me. I don't care what goes across the street from me. When I talked to the citizens who would be affected in that area, and I didn't go over, we went over to Moat Road, which is on the other side of, in District Four, on the other side of one sixty-two, and talked to the people there.
Hey, guys.
If, I didn't go and talk to the people there. Uh, so, the question, I think, which I've heard from citizens, or some of my constituents, who said they didn't want a service station, and I'm just going to ask this question. If this board was not to approve, could they still put a service station there?
Yes, sir, it is an allowed use by rights.
Okay, so, we could deny it, and he still could put a service station there. So, what the zoning is, and what he's requesting, is to add on additional, I guess, build a space, add it to it for additional, I guess, maybe store, whatever he want to add on to it. What are, what are the conditions? Some of the conditions that he's proposing.
Shannon, can you also explain the hours of operations too? Um, I think you need to explain all of that.
Okay. Absolutely. So, the existing conditions, um, Commissioner Henderson, is, um, number two, the, the two conditions he's looking to modify would be number two, which is the, the side plan that was submitted or approved back in twenty-eleven. They're asking to replace that with their current site plan. And then condition three, which has the current hours of operation at seven AM through ten PM, for any business that goes there, they're asking to modify those hours or to do away with that one, as well as to do away with E, which addresses the existing tree line along Shepherd Road. They will be required to replace it with a planted landscape buffer as approved by the county. So, those are the conditions they're asking to modify, and then they are proposing to... What they're proposing to do is to have their, um, to have a new site plan and to change the hours, here we go, from six AM to twelve midnight. And all the other conditions that were previously approved in twenty-eleven will remain. So, just those two they're asking to modify.
So, my last question to you is, what was, uh, were there any recommendations from the planning?
I'm sorry, is there any?
Were there any recommendations from the planning to approve, disapprove?
We do have our recommendations here, that they have to, A, maintain a landscape strip. So, even though they're asking to remove the current, um, condition that is there, they still have to replace it with a modified version to be approved by the county. Uh, we have the hours of operation from six AM to twelve midnight, if the board wishes to leave it that way, seven days a week. And then all the other conditions that were previously, uh, put in place in twenty-eleven will hold. And I can go back to those, and they're in your packet, but I can, um... Right, so, these were, these were the things that were not allowed back then, all these uses. So, that is one of the conditions that we have. Right, and then you have number two, so there are quite a few. These are the old conditions that will remain in place.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, I, I guess, uh, you know, it still doesn't matter whether we approve it or disapprove it. The service station is going there if they, if those businessmen want to build one there on that piece of property. So, having said that, maybe I can just go ahead with a motion for me. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the staff recommendations.
Is there a second? The motion failed for lack of support. Thank you. Offer another motion? Is there a motion to deny?
Board, you are required to act one way or the other
Thank you, sir.
on the motion, so, on the matter appearing before you, either approve it, deny it, or you could vote to postpone it again, which I don't know that that would be very useful, but you are required to act on the, on the request. If, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Shep.
Look here, you may not agree with me. You may disagree with me, but at the end of the day, that's why you were put up here to make a decision. And, um, do it.
Commissioner, you can modify your motion if you want. I mean, you, you don't have to, I'm just saying you can't.
Just let me say this, in, in what you're telling me. There's no reason why, even if we were denied the way we do, he's, they still can build a gas station there. So, you still have four gas stations. All the gas stations still on twelve o'clock. And so, we just, it, it could possibly be another suit against us just not making a decision. So, you know, it's whatever the board want to do. Now, I make the tough decisions, because that's who I am.
I would suggest that Mr. Henderson is right. If you don't act on it, you will almost certainly face a suit compelling you to act on it. You are required to act on it. If you don't want to approve it, then the natural, the natural vote may be to deny it.
Motion to deny.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you. Hey, guys, guys, please, please don't do that, please don't do that. Um, it's been motion by Commissioner Edwards, uh, second by Commissioner Cowan. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, it passed. All in favor, I'm sorry. All, it's passed four to one, one in favor. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Chairman, our next, uh, case this evening is also old business. Um, just to recap briefly, it's REZ twenty-two dash zero 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 one four, located at seventy, seventy-nine Highway two twelve and Highway twenty. It is on approximately three point zero nine six acres. It's two lots. Tax ID one dash seven and one dash seven A. Future land use currently is mixed use. Existing zoning is R two, and the proposed zoning tonight is general commercial. It is located in the South River watershed, Commissioner District Two. And we have our owners, uh, William Stewart Hall and Suzie Kate Onlode Wood care of Anne Hallhead. And our petitioner tonight are the representative, um, our petitioner is Giza DeGale or Brad Horrible. And just a brief history, um, notice approved by the planning commission, recommended for approval on October twenty-fifth of last year. It was tabled at the first BOC meeting for sixty days. It was also tabled at the last meeting to add some recommended prohibited uses for the board to consider. And the applicant's intent was to rezone the entire parcel or the two parcels from R two, single family to commercial, general commercial, for a proposed restaurant and retail establishment. And, um, I won't go through everything because we've had this before as well. So, they did the required traffic memorandum that was requested by the board, and we have our recommended conditions. So, should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved, general, commercial, general, or general commercial. Conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And one, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, a minor plat must be approved by the Department of Development Services to combine the lots. B, a seventy-five foot buffer must be maintained along the western boundary line, which is adjacent to the R two or single family zoning. C, any required permits must be obtained from Development Services before construction or development. And D, permits must be obtained from external agencies, G dot, NCWSA, and GSWCC. And these are the proposed, uh, prohibited conditions that are, um, before the board tonight. So, the following uses shall not be allowed, or the owner, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of this subject property as follows. One, amphitheaters, stadiums, two auto recovery. Three, bar or nightclub. Four, campground, RV park. Five, private club or the lodge. Six, electric station, gas pumps not related to an anchor store. Seven, flea market. Eight, hospital. Nine, manufactured home sales, rental or repair. Ten, manufactured home display. Eleven, a produce stand. Twelve, light manufacturing. Thirteen, commercial outdoor recreational facilities. Fourteen, sawmill, planing mill. Fifteen, tattoo parlor. And sixteen, adult bookstore or adult entertainment. And those were the conditions that, um, we're proposing, not the conditions, sorry, the uses that staff is proposing, um, to be prohibited from that parcel. And this is aerial. Of course, it's currently zoned R two, so going to commercial. We have mixed use as the future land use. South River watershed. And this is the survey, boundary survey presented, and there are actually two parcels. And this is the concept layout that was provided. And the applicant is here if there are any further questions.
Thank you.
Or if there are questions for staff.
Thank you, we had a, um, open, um, we had a...
We had a public hearing already, sir.
Yeah, we had a hearing. So, we're going to go ahead, this is Commissioner, uh, two, District, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve with staff recommendations. Uh, rezoning case number REZ two-two dash zero 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 one four.
For the board, sir.
Thank you.
If it's advertised as a public hearing, vote on signs and on...
Sir. Sir, we have, we have, already had our public hearing, if you would, um, thank you, sir.
Your agenda specifically says a public hearing of these zoning rights.
I'm sorry? Yeah, sir. Sir, if you would, can you please take your seat, please? Thank you, sir. Sir, if you would, please take your seat, please. It's not on here, huh? It's not a public hearing. It's just old business. It's not advertised as a public hearing.
I don't know if it was advertised in the staff board, I have to answer that. It's, the agenda
It's not.
does not specifically call for a public hearing.
Yeah. Sir, if you would, please. Deputy, sir, if you would. Please, thank you, sir. Sir. Thank you, sir. Can I, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Mason made so. Commissioner Mason made the... Guys, 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 listen. Recession, we're going to take a quick recess. Guys, listen. Uh, listen, I'm trying, I'm, I am, I'm trying to be as nice as I can. Uh, you gonna have, you, you, you have to stop interrupting the meeting. If not, I'm going to ask the deputy to, 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 to take you out. Um, you, you, you got to respect the meeting. If you, if you want to talk to your commissioners, please talk to your commissioners after the meeting. If you want to talk to the chair, please talk to the chair after the meeting, or come up here and make your comments, and we can talk after the meeting. But I'm going to ask you to refrain from making comments in the board meeting. If not, um, we're not going to call for recess again, I'm going to ask the bailiff to remove you. We're going to go back into our regular board meeting. It was a motion by Commissioner Mason. It was seconded by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? Thank you, it passed four oh. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Chairman, we're on to new business now. Our next case, it's a future land use amendment.
Can, can you explain the new business? This is for a public hearing. Can you do that? We're going to have a public hearing on this, new business.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, this would be open for a public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am.
It is a future land use amendment, case number is FLU twenty-two dash zero 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 six. Existing land use map is AF, agricultural forestry. The proposed land use map, which they're asking to go to, would be RR, rural residential. The existing zoning is A, agricultural watershed, Little River. It is located on Highway two twenty-nine. Map and parcel number is one twenty-six dash one five. It is a total, the total lot is a hundred and twenty-two point eight eight acres, but they're only updating the flume for two point six nine acres. And owner is Elliot William, and petitioner is John Knight. So, the applicant's intent is to designate the future land use of the two point six nine acres from the parent parcel of a hundred and twenty-two point eight eight acres to rural residential in order to seek a rezoning of the property for residential use. And again, her existing flume is AF, proposed is RR. And conclusion, the two point six nine acres is currently undeveloped. It is a part of the larger parent parcel. And pursuant to the Highway eleven preservation corridor, character areas, appropriate land uses, rural residential is suitable land use request. And should the board decide to approve this petition, staff is of the opinion that the future land use amendment may be appropriate in the area. And since this is a future land use amendment, we do not have, uh, recommendations at this time. Should the board approve it, it'll come before you again for the rezoning, at which time recommendations can be made. And the applicant is Mr. John Knight. I don't think I see him.
I don't know.
But if there are any questions for staff?
Thank you, we're going to open it up now. Guys, this is seven forty-seven, um, approximately. We're going to open it up now for our public hearing. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor, you have ten minutes to do so. You may come at this time, the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor. Thank you, that portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow for ten minutes for those that would like to oppose. If you would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Would anyone like to oppose tonight? Would anyone like to oppose tonight? Would anyone like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. Uh, Ms. Appleweight, please.
And Chairman, I know you, um, the board will have these images in their packets. I'm just going to go ahead and flip through briefly. So, this is the location, the parent parcel that we're looking at. This where the area, this little area here that has the star, that's the two point six nine acres they're looking to amend the flume for. And here's the flume showing is AF. They're going to the lighter yellow up here, RR, which is just adjacent to it. Little River watershed. And of course, this is just a close-up. So, they're rezoning this portion here, and they're going to be combining it with that if it's approved.
Thank you. I think this is District two?
Yeah.
Is it District one? District one, I'm sorry.
It is District one.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This time I'd like to make a motion to approve future land use map amendment, case number FLU two-two dash zero 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 six.
Thank you, sir. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Any discussion? All, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. For the record, Ms. Appleweight, you know, I've already talked about this, so I want to ask for the record. Uh, this case, this flume case, uh, does not change the flume or the ma, flume map for the, for the balance of the one hundred and twenty-five point five seven acres, is that correct?
That is correct, sir. They're just doing this portion here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
Chairman, our next case this evening, it is, uh, part of a companion case, so the case coming after it. The first one is a rezoning case. Uh, if the rezoning is approved by the board tonight, we'll move forward with the conditional use permit. So, the case number is REZ twenty-two dash zero 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 one seven. The companion case is the CUP twenty-two dash zero 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 seven. It is located at sixty-five Salem Circle. Parcel size is two point seven, the parcel size that they're going to rezone is two point seven three two acres approximately. And that's just the part that is zoned, single family residential. There is another part of it, it's a dual zone property. The other part that is currently zoned, general commercial. The other part that is currently zoned, general commercial, is 5.2434 acres approximately. And it's about a total of eight acres in all. The tax parcel number is 13-73. The existing land use map is development node. The existing zoning, like you said, is R2, single family and CG, general commercial. And it is in the Salem overlay tier three. And the proposed zoning for the R2 portion is general commercial. It is located in the South River watershed, Commissioner District Two. The current owner is Jacqueline J. Wilson, petitioner Thomas Gibson. And applicant's intent is to rezone the 2.732 acres out of the eight acre parcel from R2, single family to general commercial for a landscaping business, which they'll be conducting on the entire parcel. We already have the stats for the subject site. It's approximately eight acres. And there's currently a residential home located on the commercially zoned portion of it. And conclusion, provided staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site, the proposed zone change request to general commercial is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with approved zonings in the area. A large portion of the lot is currently zoned, general commercial, and the rezoning of the 2.73 acres would eliminate the current dual zoning that the property has. Recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the board of commissioners, it should be approved, general, commercial, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use to the following, A, landscaping business. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, all landscaping plans are to be approved by development services. B, provide satisfactory ingress and egress for the site from Brown Bridge Road or Salem Circle, which will be approved by Newton County Transportation Department. C, any required permits must be obtained from development services. And D, the allowed fencing material shall be black or green vinyl clad chain link fence, wood fencing and masonry, or masonry privacy fence, or you can have plantings with continuous vegetative screening. So this is the location of the property currently. The business is currently located here, so they're looking to move across the street. As you said, the property is dual zoned. So the 2.7 acres they're looking to rezone, it's this portion here. So it'll just be one zoning. It is currently located in a development node. The watershed is the South River. And this is the survey showing, um, you know, exactly where's, where the zoning splits. There's currently an existing home on there. The applicant's intent is to convert that home to an office space for their business. So it'll be a full commercial operation. And then this is a concept plan of the layout. They will have the bins, various bins for their landscaping material. The main entrance is gonna be on Brown Bridge Road. And then you've got the house here, which will be the new office space. And of course, they're maintaining their buffers along residential. And if there are any questions? Yeah, I believe the applicant is here, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is approximately 7:54. We're gonna open it up now for our public hearing. Um, the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor, you have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight.
Good evening, Board members. Jared Thompson, representative, uh, for More Civil Consultants. As you can see, this was a piece of property that was zoned, dual zoned, and we would just like to have it to a single zone. And, um, really, I'm up here for, if y'all have any questions about the site.
Thank you, sir.
No questions.
No, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. Um, those that, the, want, would anyone wanna speak in opposition tonight? I'm sorry. Wanna open it up for those that would like to speak in opposition tonight? You have 10 minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone wanna speak in opposition tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleweight, please. I think this is Commissioner Mason as well. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to actually make a motion, um, that we approve the rezoning case number REZ 22-000017 with rec, with staff recommendations.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second, uh, by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman. Our final case this evening, uh, because the rezoning was approved, we'll move forward with the conditional use permit. Uh, because the property is located in the Salem overlay, this is a requirement for this type of land use. So the case number is CUP 22-000007. And again, the companion case was just previously completed, 20, uh, REZ 22-000017. The proposed use is a landscaping business located in Salem Circle. Uh, many of the particulars are the same. The 2.73 acres, uh, well, it was just rezoned, so it's now all general commercial. Tax ID is 13-73. Development node is the future land use. And now the existing zoning is general commercial. South River watershed, District Two. And our owner is Jacqueline Wilson and our petitioner, um, on file is Thomas Gibson. And again, the history, um, it was heard initially in the planning, it was not heard on January 24th, due to no quorum at the planning commission. On February 14th, they recommended approval by vote of four zero. And again, the applicant's intent is to do the landscaping business. And we have the particulars of the subject site, as mentioned in the previous case. It's a total of about eight acres. So based on the site plan submitted by the applicant to the department, on December 27th, staff offers the following consideration. We look at fencing, property, development standards, general design, standards and signage. So the site plan in the letter of intent, they indicated proposed landscape business that's to be located there. And applicant has provided a survey of the property. And with eight acres, there is adequate acreage for this type of business to be established. And I won't read through this. This is in your staff packets. It's basically the definition for the landscaping business. And then the section from the ordinance, section 510-365, which gives, uh, development criteria, development standards for this type of, uh, business. And in conclusion, given the fact that the property is in proximity to commercial zonings and applicant proposed use of the land, staff is of the opinion that the reason, that the conditional use permit may be appropriate for the site. And our recommended conditions, they are similar to the ones from the rezoning case. And this would be an opportunity if the board would like to add any other conditions of zoning. But should the petition be approved by the board of commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for the landscape business, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board of commissioners. And one, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use to the following, a landscape business or company. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards, which is A, all landscaping plans are to be approved by development services. B, provide satisfactory ingress and egress from the site from Brown Bridge Road or Salem Circle. C, any required permits must be obtained from development services. And D, addresses the fencing material, which is, you know, black or green vinyl clad chain link fence. It could be wood fencing, it could be masonry, or it could be a vegetative screening. And again, same, these are the same aerials, the same location. Development node, we have the South River. This is the survey that was presented and the layout. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you.
And applicant is here.
It's approximately 8:01. We're gonna open it up for our public hearing. For the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor, you have 10 minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that wanna speak in favor tonight. The applicant and those that wanna speak in favor tonight. Thank you. Um, that portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. You have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Would, anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. I think this is, um, also Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve conditional use permit case number CUP 22-000007 with staff recommendations.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by, um, Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Guys, we're gonna revert back now to the Chairman's report. Uh, we have some special guests with us, with us tonight. The MLK Committee, Ms. Gail and whomever would you like to bring up with you? If you would, please come on up tonight. Ms. Wimberly, more than welcome to come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good me, good evening to the board. Um, thank you for allowing us to once again, uh, come before the Board of Commissioners. I know you have, pretty much since, uh, the, your time in position, uh, welcomed the, um, uh, recipients of the awards from each year. Um, this year in particular, or at least for the past couple of years, because we have been in a pandemic situation, we have not had our in-person event that has, uh, taken place or the in-person event was held 35 years, um, without any interruption. Uh, the last three years, it has been, uh, via, uh, video broadcast that has taken place. And certainly, this event was established under the leadership of the Board of Commissioners, Newton County Board of Commissioners back in 1985, uh, particularly covering even the cost of the event for a number of years. We hope to resume that, I must say. But in any case, we are here tonight to present, uh, the awards to the individuals who, because we had the video presentation, we're not able to do so. So I'll try to move, uh, quickly, 'cause I know we have, you have, um, an agenda. I believe most of the recipients are here tonight also.
Excuse me, give me, give me one second. Um, can you ask them to step away from the door, please? My apologies.
That's okay. And I'm sorry, I, I didn't, for, uh, for the record, I, I, I am Gail Slaton. I serve as the Chair of the Newton County Martin Luther King Celebration Committee. Uh, with me tonight is one of our committee members, uh, Mrs. Margaret, Margaret Wimberly, uh, to assist in presenting the awards. I'm starting to see, I believe, most of our, um, award recipients are here tonight, with the exception of, I know at least one of the Young Dreamers this year. We had three Young Dreamers recognized, uh, but Ms. Haley Quinn is out of town with her family. Uh, first, we will recognize the, um, uh, we will start with our Young Dreamer category. Our first recipient, um, is an active member of her church, school, uh, and community in general. She is a leader as a Girl Scout. Um, she particularly has demonstrated her leadership, uh, in student government and serving as a mediator, um, in her school. And this year's recipient is Ms., uh, one of our recipients of the Young Dream Award for 2023 is Ms. Alana Jackson.[1452.84][1452.88](applause) All right, maybe she didn't, we got two who didn't make it. Our next Young Dreamer Award recipient, um, is also, um, an active, uh, individual in her community. All of these young people demonstrate or model to their peers, uh, peace, uh, unity and love in demonstration through their activities, be it serving, uh, in their communities, as community, um, community servants, uh, or otherwise modeling, uh, behavior for peers. Uh, Ms., uh, this particular recipient has, was recognized in particular for also, um, taking active steps to, again, mediate conflict around her as well as demonstrate leadership in her community.
Ms. Gail, so the, the board, I wanna present something to them as well. For the sake of time, I'm gonna come and present with you. Is that okay?
Okay, that's fine. One second, these are not my regular readers. Live long enough, it'll happen, right? So that's the gift. Um, our last Young Dreamer Award recipient, again, I indicated, is not, uh, present with us tonight, but just to, uh, give a little bit of, uh, insight about, uh, the, um, other recipient. Um, she was, the nominator, uh, indicated that she was best in that she maintains vigorous standards of classwork, um, and academic performance, that she also has, um, been, uh, a specific, uh, leader in terms of health, uh, mental health, substance abuse, domestic violence, suicide prevention, infant mortality, and to name a few, that she's particularly taken an active role in, uh, being an advocate and spreading awareness about in her community. Um, we are pleased to recognize, again, as mentioned, Ms. Haley Quinn.[1663.01][1663.04](applause) And, um, we will, um, uh, present the individual, the students who are not here, we will do those award presentations at their schools.
Okay.
Moving to the Trailblazer Award category. Um, our recipient of the Trailblazer Award, um, this year is an individual who was born and raised in this community. And I had the opportunity to, to essentially grow up with as a class, uh, behind this recipient. Um, she has demonstrated just, um, a commitment to being an overachiever, um, to the extent of being a true advocate for the youth of the county, uh, special needs students, and particularly being, uh, a tutor, um, starting a tutor, tutorial mentoring program, and also expanding and establishing other various initiatives, including a, um, festival that grew, had, that has grown from 1,800 individuals, uh, to more than 3,000 individuals. Again, taking every effort to, um, utilize every resource to, um, redirect it to the benefit of the youth of this county and is a tireless advocate in that regard. For that reason, Ms., among others, um, Ms. Jackie Smith is the recipient of our 2023 Trailblazer Award.[1749.61][1749.64](applause)
Also, Ms. Jackie, we greatly appreciate all that you do. You always are volunteering. Thank you. Your face is everywhere. So thank you so much for what you do in this community. We greatly appreciate you. On, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we want to present this to you.[1782.45][1782.48](applause)
Okay, and our, um, last award presentation, uh, that we, uh, will present, um, goes to. Okay, and our last award presentation that we will present goes to a faith entity. This award, or actually, a number of these awards, or, excuse me, the Trailblazer and both the I Have a Dream Award can go to either an individual or an organization. And that has happened in the past, this year. It is specifically going to a church that has been longtime servant in this community, present, whose presence has stood the test of time in impacting the community as part of the United Methodist Church. This particular church has served us diligently, and in more recent years, just among the specific events of more recent years, has taken a stand particularly in advocating and providing space for homeless citizens and residents of the county, being the hands and feet of Christ in the community, and certainly envisioning and exemplifying the message of Dr. King in terms of providing, again, for the physical needs, as well as the spiritual needs of individuals in the community. Our twenty-twenty-three MLK I Have a Dream Award recipient is to Reverend Dr. Robert L. Crawford Senior and the Grace United Methodist Church.
Thank you so much. This is indeed a great honor. I have an awesome congregation. You know that. I've just been around a few years, they have been here for over a hundred and fifty, and they have been working, serving, giving, as other churches and faith organizations. So we are so honored to receive this award. When Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated, I was in the eighth grade. That's been many years ago. But I have always demonstrated with my congregations his beliefs, his legacy, nonviolence. And I told my congregation, when I was notified of this award, I cried. To Chairman Baines, this wonderful board, you're doing your work. It's tough work. I applaud you, and I applaud the things that you all do in this community. It is one of the best, this is my forty-second year in the ministry, this is the best, I'll tell anybody, community that I have served. Everybody's giving, everybody's supporting. And this is the thing that has made Newton County and Cavington the place where people want to come. Y'all almost got me. Thank you so much for this award. And thanks to my wonderful congregation.
Also, Pastor, we want to, again, thank you and Grace Church for what all you do in the community. I remember when I graduated high school, coming to Grace, they were giving out scholarships to
Still doing it.
They still, y'all still doing it, okay, wow. So y'all been helping people for a long time, I won't say how many years ago it was when I graduated, but it's been a while, so y'all still are blessing people in the community. Thank you for all that you do, you got a big, don't mess with Grace, look at him. Don't mess with Grace, you got a big team, so we congratulate you on all the accomplishments that you guys are doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
God bless you.
And thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna, if you don't mind, we're gonna get a quick picture with the Commissioners and y'all, if you don't mind.
So all recipients present, if you could please come forward. And while they're coming, I would just take this opportunity as well to just note again about our I Have a Dream Award recipients, Grace United Methodist Church, that of the individuals who've come forward who are members of Grace, several of them themselves have been MLK Award recipients, and of course, several of them have been diligent servers of our community. Ms. Adams, of course, Ms. Williams, Ms. Goodman, and countless others who have served our community. So it is certainly in the blood of the Grace Community Family. Again, thank you Chairman Baines, thank you board, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much, thank you. Ms. Latonya. Ms. Latonya.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to move to number seven on the item, on the agenda item. It is reports from our interim county manager, Mr. Jarvis Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have no report today.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to move to number nine, which is our consent agenda.
Thank you. Guys, I seek a motion that we approve. Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? It passed five oh, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, we are on items for board discussion and consideration. Item number ten, the Finance Department, presented by Ms. Brittany White, Finance Director for January twenty-twenty-three Financial Update.
Director White.
Good evening, tonight I would be presenting the January twenty-twenty-three financials. January is our seventh month of the year, so we should be trending somewhere around fifty-eight percent. I'll start with the General Fund revenues. To date, the General Fund has brought in fifty-nine point eight million. That is seventy point seven five percent of our actual to projection, which is normal this year, because we do receive a bulk of our revenues in property taxes. And these are two just, two graphs that show the by-month collections and then the actuals to budget. Our General Fund expenditures, to date, we are at forty-six point three eight, forty-six point three million, which is fifty-four point three four percent, so we are trending about four percent in savings in our General Fund budget expenditures right now. And these are just two graphs that show the by-month and then the actual to-budget amount. So our General Fund totals, at this point, our revenues are thirteen point four million over, but we will see that slowly dwindle down as the year moves on, since we have collected a bulk of our revenues at this point in the year. Our three enterprise funds, Water Fund, their revenues, actual year-to-date, are five point nine million, and their expenses year-to-date are three point nine million. Solid Waste Fund, revenue actual to-date, four point five million, expenses, three point two million, and Gaithers and Factory Shoals, a hundred and eighty-two thousand for revenues, and then a hundred and twenty-five thousand for expenses. And we have two active SPOLOs, the two thousand and eleven SPOLOs has one remaining project, which is the Historic Jail. The two thousand and seventeen SPOLOs, we have thirty-four point six, and we're actively working on several of the projects in that fund. Our collections to date are eighty-eight point three, so we are trending about twenty-eight million over what our original budgeted collections were. And then in our Impact Fee Fund, we have four point seven million. Any questions?
Any questions, guys? Commissioner Sanders.
Brittany, I know there was a discussion previously, I had a question about the impact fees, because the impact fees come from those areas that build a lot of homes. So what is the plan to make sure those impact fees are spent, are put back into those areas made for recreation and so forth? What is the plan for the county to do that, because they have not been doing that in the past?
Are you talking about, like, if they collect per district, that the money goes back to the district? I mean, I don't think our
And the reason, the reason why I brought that up, because a lot of developers have mentioned, in other counties, that's what they do to help with parks and rec. That district that produces those impact fees, they put it back into the district to help with parks and recreation or whatever is needed. So that's what the question I asked, and I did have that conversation previously with our county manager. And they were looking for, I guess, ideas and so forth, so I was curious of what the ideas were going to be on how the impact fees are going to be built, I mean utilized, excuse me.
I can address, I can address the legal issue you're mentioning. Newton County's impact fee ordinance is set up where, so that the county is a single-service district. You can, if you elect, create multiple service districts within the county, which would achieve the goal you're addressing. The county did not elect to do that when it established the impact fees, nor when it updated its impact fees. I think Mr. Ross was here a year or two ago and updated?
He's, he's actually working on it.
He's working on it, okay. So that is an option, I will tell you, it is enormously complex. And I think if Mr. Ross was here, he would probably tell you, you don't want to do that, because of the complexity of it. But there's nothing that prohibits the county from identifying needs within a particular area, but as the impact fee ordinance is written today, the county is treated as one big service area, such that there's no requirement that the funds be spent in the district or in the specific area of the county where they're generated.
Because the issue being is that the funding is not being distributed evenly. So that's why I asked about that, because you do have areas that are on certain sides of town that are producing maximum amount of impact fees, but they're not seeing any benefits from it, as far as the lack of parking, recreation, even the roads, sidewalks, and so forth. So that's why I asked, if we have the funding there to help those areas that are in need, and they are producing the impact fees, I don't see nothing wrong, like other counties do, to make sure that those areas have what they need. I believe that all parts of New County should have what they need, but those who are lacking, we need to look at those areas.
And as Patrick mentioned, Mr. Ross is currently working, he's in the beginning stages of revamping the impact fee ordinance, so when he comes to the board, that would probably be a good time to discuss that.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, Brittany.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is Ms. Trudy Henry, Covington, Newton. Newton County nine-one-one is requesting approval of Motorola Solutions Change Order Number Eight to include radios for code enforcement.
Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight I come to you to ask for additional funding for the Public Safety Radio System to include five radios for code enforcement. This will provide them extra safety in the field, they'd be able to communicate with deputies in the need if a situation arise. Twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you, guys, I seek a motion, please. So, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
My question is, where would this funding come from?
SPOLOs funding.
SPOLOs, okay, thank you.
It would have to be the two thousand and seventeen SPOLOs, yeah.
So it comes from two thousand and seventeen SPOLOs?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number twelve, discussion and consideration to change the Newton County Board of Commissioners' meeting calendar from bimonthly meetings to a single monthly meeting beginning March twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Ms. Sims, you got it, or you want me to get it? You want me to get it? Okay. Commissioners, this is something that we had talked about amongst ourselves, changing our board meeting to one, one meeting a month. If you guys have a discussion, we'd love to hear it. Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
My only concern is getting the information in an ample amount of time, because the example, with our two meetings a month, we, sometimes we get the information the day of or the weekend before the meeting. The only way I would agree with this, if we have something put in place that the constituents and the Commissioners at least get the information a week or a little bit more before that meeting. If we're doing it once a month, there should be no excuse that we're getting information on time. And there should be some deadlines, and I know that the grants, exception of the grants, there should be some official set deadlines that we stick to, that you cannot add stuff to the agenda unless the Commissioners do so at the meeting, but we need to reiterate that to the departments.
Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards, and then Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the feedback I've received has not been favorable, although I had my previous conversations with you, I told you I would support going to a single meeting. My only, my request is that we, you never go into anything, you never go into any action planning to fail, right? So, but we cannot be afraid to retreat if we find this is not the proper
So, so the thing is, is we do once-a-month meetings, and we do special call meetings as needed. Like if we, like tonight, for instance, right, guys, we had six zoning cases, right? If that would have been a, if we would have been after March, we would have a special call meeting for those six zoning cases. You see what I mean? Yeah, versus in the meeting, yeah. You can't do six meetings, I mean, you can't do six zoning cases in a meeting that's held for once a month. You just can't do it, so then you would do a special call meeting. Any more questions? I mean, Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. C. Well, I'm just, I'm just gonna, you know, my, sorry, here go, here go our government again. You know, sometimes we have meetings, they're just about a whole night long. And having one meeting where I get to be until the next morning. Then we have call meetings, I have, maybe we have a business department, I can't make the call meeting, and you miss something, and what happens? Shoot, my constituent does not get represented at that particular meeting. Hey, if it's not broke, stop trying to fix something. And it's not broke, and we know it's not broke. And it may be easy on us, but is it easy on our constituents? Leave it like it is, we've been living for all these years, so now why, why are there, is a change? You know, so, that's my opinion.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Mr. Chair, board member, something you may want to think about is, you may find it beneficial if you, regardless of how many meetings you have a month, whether it's one or two, you might find it beneficial if you separate your agenda into, such that you have one meeting that covers routine business items. Approval of contracts, discussion of item, you know, discussion of just routine business, and a second meeting that's devoted exclusively to the more public-facing things. and a second meeting that's devoted exclusively to the more public-facing things, um, zoning matters, things that require public hearings, um, and, and of like, you know, something that's really caught the attention of the public, like ARPA, ARPA funding and things like that. That, that would be a little more work on the agenda creation side and probably require a little more advanced planning, but that's something that I do know serves a lot of governments, where they, where they separate out just the, the, the drudgery work that generally people aren't interested in. And it allows you to sort of focus on just business at a meeting. And then in another meeting, you're focusing on the, you know, the more public-facing, public, uh, things that capture the public's attention. So that's something y'all might want to think about.
Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. So Patrick, what you telling us, the county attorney, you telling us, you telling the commissioners, that, that we should have just one meeting? That what you telling us? And, and discuss all this, all this at one meeting?
No, sir, I suggested that you consider a separate meeting, one meeting that handles business, and a second met, meeting that handles the more public-facing things.
What, what if there are constituents or constituents who are unable to make it a certain portion of the meeting for something they want to address, whereas you have two meetings, possibly get a chance to say yea or nay, or tell you you're not right, or do this, sometimes I get, say, well, you know, we don't think this right. And they won't have the opportunity, because either they were working, or it wasn't a, a time to matter. But, you know, I understand the majority rule, but I, I just think that this will bring on a whole more, a lot, a lot of chaos towards our constituents as far as these meetings being changed. And this was something that just stood on us, like it was me last week, I was, uh, asked by the clerk, whether or not I was being favored, so, so I was just, uh, I think there should be a works, work session on it. Invite our constituency in and see if that's what they want. Because it used to be, I don't know, it may have changed, or changed since I've been on the boards, I've been so long, it used to be, it's about the people, not about us, and what you would have us to do in order to help our communities and our families and our county to move forward. Stop taking us.
Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'm trying to understand, um, the dynamics of, uh, having one versus two. So does that mean if we only had one meeting per month, one business meeting, does that mean that that's going to make that Board of Commissioners' meeting longer? Or does it mean that it will be shorter because we won't have the zoning matters, we won't have all the other items, um, for the business meeting? So that would make it a shorter meeting because we're only dealing with just the county business? Or does that mean we're going to add more agenda items to that one meeting to try to get everything done in that one night? So I guess that's what I want to understand, is, is it going to make it longer? Or is it going to make it shorter? Because if it's going to make it shorter, where we can have time for maybe the, uh, residents maybe to have more time to speak and, you know, some of the requests that they've made, I'm trying to figure out how, how, what that looks like.
I think, Commissioner, what you would find is, if you look back at any two meeting agendas, um, you can, you can usually identify the things that take up most of your time. Those are typically those forward-facing things. Zoning matters and, and the things that sort of capture the public's attention, ARPA funding kind of things like that. The routine business, today, the routine business, you, you have covered the, the bulk of your routine business, and you did that relatively quickly. You did it with your consent agenda and those two or three items. And likewise, last month, same way, you had a, or the last meeting, you had a consent agenda and you handled the routine business really quickly. The things that take time are those forward-facing things. So I think what you would likely see is that you would, your business meeting, that if you did this, and, and I'm not saying you must, it's something to think about, if you did it, I think you, you would find that the meeting sort of dedicated to the boring business of the county will probably be a faster meeting, but it'll have a bigger agenda, because you'll be covering the business meetings, the business items from two meetings. But I, I, I think it's probably also fair to say, if you're covering two meetings worth of zoning items, that, that, for lack of a better word, that forward-facing, the more public input at a meeting, that may wind up being a longer meeting, because you're going to have two meetings worth of zoning. Now, I don't think there was any zoning on the last board meeting. Um, I, I think the last meeting, there was no zoning items on it, so, but you don't know, you, there is an ebb and flow of, of things, and unfortunately, you know, like I said before, zoning, zoning matters, you must, you, you must deal with those. Now, you could adopt a policy to limit how many appear on any, any agenda, but what you're doing there is you're hamstringing property owners with, with what is probably already a frustrating long process.
So, uh, as a follow-up, i- if we were to separate the two, where we had like the zoning in a special call meeting, or like ARPA in a special call meeting, would that mean we would have more special call meetings during the month? Because even though we're only having one business meeting, would we have to have two or three business, I mean, special call meetings?
You would have, you want to do it? You, you would have one special call meeting to handle, to handle zoning issues, um, just, just like tonight. When we, when they, when we put together this agenda, right, we handle all the zoning issues for the, for the month, right? It comes on this agenda. It'd be the same thing, we'd just have a special call meeting. Uh, so you know, we don't do zoning at every meeting.
Right.
You see, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Uh, so, I mean, you would come in and you would do your zoning cases, uh, work the same way. Um, Ms. Director Applewhite, she would come up and present, I'm sorry, she left, yeah. But she would come up and present her cases, just like we do. Once we done with that, we would end the meeting.
So what this sounds like to me, and correct me if I'm incorrect, if we did one business meeting, we would only address those business, um, items, we wouldn't be here until eleven, twelve o'clock at night, because we would be able to get through the business portion a lot faster. And then if we held another special called meeting to just do the zoning, or like we kind of do with work sessions, that'll probably take us about an hour or so, and it will be, will be done. So we would still probably have two meetings per month, they would just be a lot faster.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Not all the time.
There may be months where they're on a zoning matter. And now, keep in mind, they're not going to be last minute, last minute scheduled meetings. Zone, forgot my microphone. Zoning meetings must be advertised at least two weeks in advance.
Yeah.
So there's going to be a, it's, there's going to be a good lead-in, you're going to know when those are coming and when they're not coming. And the likelihood is, is your planning director's going to know, she's probably going to be able to forecast several months out, because she knows what's in her pipeline, she knows what applications have been filed, what's going in front of the Planning Commission, you know, she knows sort of how that process is moving along. Um, and, and it would probably make sense that if that, if that special called meeting was on a, was on a predetermined day of the month, every month, so it's not random, it's not, you know, the first Wednesday one month, and the third Friday the next month, you, you're going to want to pick them, you know, on one of your routine meeting nights, and, but it may just be meetings, nights, you just don't have those meetings, if there's nothing to, nothing to do with it.
So there may be a time, we won't even have any zoning at all for that month, and we'll still just only have that one meeting, but it'll be a meeting that's not, where we're not here as long, because we're only handling the business and we're not adding any additional public-facing items. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to table this, I'm going to tell you why I would like to table this. So we can get it in writing, we can physically see, because we actually looking in our heads, trying to visualize how the structuring is going to be. So if our staff can, or who member who's supposed to write this out, write down the options that we have by going one meeting. Because there's no guarantee that we will only have one special call meeting a month, because sometimes we've had two to three in one month if business has to be handled. So if we can get in writing, the structuring of how it's going to look, then we can put it out, that our constituents look at, and possibly put out a poll to see if they agree to it. And then we can move forward from there. So I would like to motion to table this agenda item for maybe the next meeting or so, so we can get something structured in writing, so we know where we're going.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion that we table this, and, until when?
Uh, the next meeting.
Until the next board meeting by Commissioner Sanders?
Yeah.
And it's second by Commissioner, um, Henderson. Any discussion, Commissioner Henderson?
Yes. Um, you know, I, I've been here for a while, and in his, my understanding, reading why these meetings are set up, is to, is not for the convenience of the commissioners, is for the convenience of our constituents. It's for y'all to come in at a time that which you can come in and observe the meeting and ask questions, or, you know, give your comments. It's not about us being convenient for us. Because we, we asked you to vote for us and put us in this, these seats, and then we say, well, hey, oh, I want to tell you right now, we ain't going to have two meetings, we have it at our convenience. And they were not supposed to be set up that way. And, um, this board is changing, and I'm not sure it's changing for the better. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Table.
Oh, you had a discussion? Go ahead, so I'm sorry.
That's okay, I thi- I think I got it answered, but, so, March was the meeting, the, the month, we would, we would have gone to the one meeting per month, that, since, if, if we follow through with Commissioner Sanders' motion, then we go, we revert back to the old schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Of the first twos, first and third twos, do you remember?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All in favor? It passes five votes, thank you. It's stand table to the next board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, we're on item number twelve A, clean up or make clear the language in the resolution for churches regarding ARPA.
Mr. Chairman, I'll set the stage for the board on this one. As board members are well aware, there was a lot of internal discussion about the, the decision that the board made at the last board meeting regarding, um, ARPA funding for nonprofits and churches. The vote of the Board of Commissioners at the last meeting was to require that nonprofits and churches provide as part of their application package in order to qualify for ARPA grants, uh, evidence of a current occupa- of occupational tax certificate granted to them in Newton County, Georgia. That had generated a lot of questions among the board members, and I was able to confirm by talking to Ms. Applewhite earlier in the week, Newton County does not actually issue occupational tax certificates to churches. Churches are exempt from the occupational tax certificate requirement.
That's right.
Nonprofits do get them, they don't pay the occupational tax, they pay a nominal administrative fee, and, and I'm sorry, I can't, I can't tell you how much that fee is. So there is a, there is a difference between the occupational tax certificate or the licensing of churches as opposed to nonprofit entities, so it really does not make any sense for you to impose on churches a requirement that they have evidence of an occupational tax certificate, because they simply don't.
Um, so we're still, go ahead, Commissioner Sanders. No, go ahead.
The question that I have, and I just want to make sure that we are clear as a board, because we know churches do have five-on-one C-threes, or nines, or whatever it may be, and so do regular nonprofit organizations. So when they hear that you're exempting one category and not all, my concern is going to be, are we going to look discriminatory? Or is Newton County going to be put in place? Because we're going to get some feedback from this, I already know, I've already had it.
I, I will tell you, I'm sure some people will think it is somehow discriminatory. While churches are treated by the Internal Revenue Service the same way nonprofits are, churches are not required to go get a five-on-one C-three certificate from the Internal Revenue Service. So the IRS treats churches differently from other nonprofits. And in my mind, that makes it, it, it just makes sense, in my mind, that the county recognizes that same distinction. If you want to require occupational tax certificates of nonprofits, that, I, I have no objection to, to you doing that, but it does not make any sense whatsoever to require that of churches. So that, you know, the IRS imposes a different burden upon a traditional nonprofit than it does a church as well.
Commissioner Henderson.
Well, what I can understand is, is what you telling us, Patrick, why didn't you tell us when we were doing it? Why you wait to the ni- the next meeting to come out and put it on the agenda? And then you want to tell us about what we need? You know, one of the first thing Ms. Kennedy said, and I never forget, their first meeting, and it kind of stuck with me, she said, well, we just can't treat other people different from others. That what she told us, she stood right up there, she told us, I remember that, I remember that. But that's exactly what we're doing. Come on, y'all. You know, these are people who are, who need the help, and we're making it more difficult for some, and it's just making it as easy as possible for all, as long as they are receiving the money and doing what it, what they're supposed to do. And I don't know why we keep making it complicated. We need to get off that, need to help people. Because if we don't spend that money, we know, I know it's going back, at least they just told me it's going back, or we're going, or, or it's going to be a part of, come up in the commission meeting and say, oh, we got to spend it, we got to spend it, we got to spend it, before it go back tomorrow. So let's stop building more courtroom, making them bigger. I think we got enough right now. Let's try to spend as much as possible as we can to businesses and churches and to our childrens and our seniors. And that's what we're not doing, and we should be doing it, and we're making it difficult on every end for people, poor people, who the money really was supposed to be sent out to, in underserved areas of Newton County, for them, to help them, give them a hand up. Instead, we try to make it harder for them to get that hand up. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So where I aired in the previous motion, I, I think it was B, made the motion, um, so where we, we aired in the previous motion was not excluding churches from the requirement of occupational tax, is that correct?
Yes, you actually expressly included them. So the discussion came up and the, the decision was to include churches, so.
Okay, okay. So.
I think it would make, I think it would make sense to adopt a motion to exclude churches from the occupational tax certificate requirement to qualify for ARPA grants.
So a move that's stated by the county attorney.
Second.
Is there a motion by Commissioner Edwards? Any discussion?
Um, I got, um, who else? I think I got Commissioner Sanders, she had her hand up while it before.
Ladies first.
Well, I actually was going to make a motion to say what, um, Commissioner Edwards stated, but I also wanted to exclude all nonprofits, but the nonprofits that are five-on-ones must be registered with the IRS, as our consultant stated last time. So that was going to be my motion, but the motion, unless I do a substitute motion. My substitute motion is, I would like to, uh, make a motion in regards to excluding all nonprofits in Newton County, and those that have a five-on-one C-three are required to have a five-on-one three C-three, must be registered with the IRS Secretary of State, as well as have all their documents in place.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, substitute motion made by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion?
One.
Commissioner Henderson.
Well, if, and I guess if, if this motion fails, then could you read out the, the original motion?
We will.
That Commissioner Edwards has said, had called out this somewhat of a controversy.
All in favor? All opposed. That motion fails, we revert back to the, um, prior motion. You want to state that motion again, please, sir?
Yes. The original motion was to remove the occupational tax certificate requirement imposed upon churches to qualify for ARPA grants.
Any discussion? Commissioner Cowan.
Patrick, let's go back to first year of law school. Uh, First Amendment, I mean, government can't get involved in churches, and we can't tax them, we can't control them with a tax or a permit or anything like that, other than a conditional use. Um, we don't need to be in the, uh, giving out licenses or, uh, occupational taxes. Now, nonprofits are treated differently, uh, they're not covered under the First Amendment. So I suggest that what we're doing is right, don't tax, don't require a church to get a occupational tax permit, but if the nonprofits are required to get one, then they need to get one. How hard is that? All right?
I think that's, I think that's fair.
Okay, that's what I learned in law school.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, it passes four-one.
I would like to turn it into this abstention.
I would like to turn into this abstention.
We already did.
I can rescind that vote?
No, you can't.
Well, I'll do it for the next meeting, make sure I send you a letter and rescind it.
Thank you. Ms. Latony?
Mr. Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is item number twelve B, clean up, make clear the language for youth commission regarding ARPA funds.
So, I'll, I'll set the stage for you on this one as well as, uh, as the board is aware, there's been a lot of debate over the past week regarding the number of youth to be appointed to the youth commission. Um, specifically whether or not the chair will appoint for youth to the youth commission as well. And likewise, whether the chair's appointees would serve as the grade level chair for that grade level of youth commission. So, the, the last communications I saw came from, uh, Kennedy, Ms. Ms. Shannon asking the board to clarify that for her, so she knows how to set up that program. And that's what's before you today, to, to make a determination as to the chair's ability to appoint youth and whether the chair's appointees would likewise sus- serve as the grade level chair.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Just to, uh, clarify, last meeting when we voted, we voted for, uh, four per district, that was the vote. Each commissioner had four appointees per district. So, when our consultant sent us the information, additional four were added on to have our chairman have four appointments. So, the conversation went back, and I stated, that's not what the Board of Commissioners voted on. I had to send her the video to show her that. And so, the issue is when I actually wrote this program, because this was one of my projects for my one million dollar, uh, project, for our ARPA, I wrote it to, for the budget to last for two years, so the county wouldn't have to put any finances in it. So, by the way that it's going, it's only gonna last for a year and cost us a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars, which means the county is gonna have to be responsible for it in twenty twenty four instead of twenty twenty five. So, I asked her to send me the budget of where she is now. So, with adding on the fourth, uh, the four more students that the chair wants to appoint, that makes it at ninety six thousand dollars, which only leaves four thousand dollars for our youth to be able to travel and throw events. And it will not last for an entire year, the fund, the whole entire funding would be exhausted in one year, which the commissioners would have to come back next year and decide on if they're gonna put this in the budget. So, we all know that four thousand dollars is not enough for twenty four or twenty youth to travel or to do whatever. Commissioners go on events for NACO or whatever, and we spend about two to three thousand dollars to go to co- to conferences. So, we know that's not enough to actually spend in regards to the event. So, that, I had, when I wrote the program, I put it at amount of each student receives fifty dollars per meeting. So, it was actually amped up to a hundred dollars per meeting, which I don't have a problem with paying the students, but last week, we opted not to give them laptops because they said it was cutting into the budget. So, by adding four more people, that's seventy two hundred dollars. And then my other gripe was that, why are we selecting the leader for these individuals? If they are emulating the Board of Commissioners, they should be able to appoint their peers. So, my option was, possibly, Mr. Chairman, maybe you can appoint one of the, the grade levels and the commissioners appoint all, so everybody's included. I was looking at the budget piece, not, not including our chairman. I was looking at the finances, so the county would not have to eat the cost, and this can be a program that would not fall by the wayside in one year for our youth, because we never had something of this magnitude in Newton County for our youth.
Thank you so much, and I'm, I'm gonna let Mr. Sam, um, say something, but I do want to say one thing. Uh, how do you, you, you just said, we're gonna have a youth commission that is, um, set up just like our Board of Commissioners. So, how do you do that without, no, 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 I didn't.
I'm gonna let you finish, yes, sir.
How do you do that without having a chair? And how, that is, that's, that is.
Mr. Chairman, I mentioned that. I said the, the, the youth vote for their chair, just like the community of Newton County vote for us.
So, that's the way.
The youth will vote for their chair, what I was saying.
Is that the way our board set up now?
Yes, it is, they, your, you, your, the, the people vote for you, am I correct?
No, no, so you're saying, no, no, so you're saying that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna argue back and forth with you, it's just turning to our argument.
No, we're having a conversation, right?
But if you're cutting me off.
You cut me off? Did you, no, we're gonna have a conversation, like you just said, let's have a conversation. You said that you want the commission to, the, the youth commission to vote for their chair among themselves, that's not the way we do it.
Mr. Chairman, when we appoint the people on the board, when we appoint those youth on the board, twenty or whomever it may be, they should be able to appoint or vote, no vote, for their leader, their chair, their vice president, their secretary. They should not be told who's gonna lead them, because they're smart enough to do that. Just like here in Newton County, once we have a, we have a body of people who vote, they vote for me, they vote for you, and they vote for everybody on this board. The only thing we're doing here is appointing and making sure the board is created. And then those youths know each other, they should want to vote for their own leader, I don't see nothing wrong with that.
Uh, Mr. Sam, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, uh, have a correction as far as with Commissioner Sanders. This board still has remaining funds from ARPA to use if the board decides to continue funding. So, I just wanted to make that, you all aware of that.
Can you tell us how much is left, because we just added fifty thousand dollars last week?
Well, if you recall.
Well, it was moved.
If you recall, when we, as for staff, asked for eight million and the board only allowed for five million, so you still would have that three million dollars to do as you wish.
So, what we need to do now is vote that that's going towards, a certain amount is going towards the youth commission. And the reason why I'm concerned about it is because we created a program, and I tried my best to budget it so the county would not eat the cost, or it would have to go on the budget next year, so that it's paid for, for two years. So, what the commission needs to do is say, we have three million left, that's gonna go and cover the youth commission. Or cover a certain amount, or a million or whatever's gonna cover the youth commission, because right now, it's looking like that program is gonna cost about a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
Uh, if I could jump in, Commissioner Sanders, you're absolutely right. There, there, if you fund this program for two years, you will need a more detailed budget. As Ms. Shannon indicated today, that if it's going to be a two-year program, that she will generate for your consideration, a program and a program budget. And I think you're right, I think you're going to have to do that, I don't, I think it might be premature to do it tonight. So, and that was what Ms. Shannon suggested in her email.
So, so tonight, we need to clean up the language, that's what we're here to do tonight.
But cleaning up the language is adding the four people, Mr. Chairman, that's adding seventy two hundred dollars to the budget. So, that's why I'm talking about finances, when we adding them four people, because the last meeting, the Board of Commissioners voted to only have twenty. With your appointment, which I don't have, it hasn't to do with you, I think you, we're taking it personal here, it has nothing to do with you being a part of it. I'm looking at the money and being able to sustain this program. It's gonna add seventy two hundred dollars. The commissioner sat here last week, when she suggested to give every one of those kids an iPad. We said no, because it was gonna cut into their travel budget, but we're okay with adding additional seventy two hundred dollars. We are being hypocrites.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess I want to know, where is the seventy two hundred dollars? Where is that actually, that amount coming from? Because if we add four, and I think, if I recall in the email, we were talking about giving, um, actually, no, I just figured it out. Uh huh, it would be an additional six hundred dollars per month. Because I think what we were doing was, we were doing a hundred and fifty per student, so that would be an additional six hundred, and if you do that for twelve months, that's where the seventy two hundred comes in. So, maybe, um, do we want to still do a hundred and fifty, or we don't want to do a different amount? Or do we just want to keep it at the stipend as a hundred and fifty, and then we just move those extra funds over to cover that additional seventy two hundred? And actually, that for two years, it'll be fourteen four. For two years, it'll be fourteen thousand four hundred for two years to cover those additional four students. And then I think too, in addition to that, where we're getting, uh, where it's getting complex in regards to the chair and not, I, I think we're looking at two different ways of voting the chair. We're looking at how we are voted as the board from our, uh, constituents, or how we as the board appoint someone to our subboards, like our planning commission, our zoning board of appeals, our DFAX board. So, on, on those boards, we as commissioners and the chair appoints someone to each one of those boards, um, as well as, uh, so there's two different ways we can do it. We can do it where, if we want to appoint, um, like we do for our subboards, or if we want to make it set up where they elect, so I think we, we have to figure out how we want to do that. So, I think we were talking about two different things, I just wanted to provide clarity to that as well. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
I just wanna, um, just to state, it's eighteen hundred, what was advertised is eighteen hundred dollars per child. So, they're gonna receive a stipend of eighteen hundred dollars a year. So, that's where the seventy two hundred dollars came from, that's what was advertised, and that's what's on the flyer. Eighteen hundred dollars a stipend per year, so that's how we got to seventeen hundred dollars. So, the reason why I was stating that, and this will be my last comment, the board just vote, they were stating that these youth, we're trying to teach them politics, we're trying to teach them civics, we're trying to teach them various things. So, with them voting for their leader, they're learning about campaigning, because those individuals can campaign for their position, they can debate, that's what they do in the other youth commission. This Newton County is not the first one to do, they've been doing it for years. Fulton has one, Henry County has one, Rockdale has one. They vote for their leader. So, there's nothing wrong with these youth doing that and being able to emulate and learn about campaigning and civics.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Ms. C. Uh, it was just another concern that I had, and that was about, uh, you know, once it is established, getting the kids two and four, and I understand about, we get, how many buses? Uh, van, two vans, is that enough to take all the kids to where they need to be? And then you gotta think about somebody, pay somebody to drive them. And then you gotta think about a possible chaperone or sort to be with them. So, all this stuff, we need to take in consideration, and to make sure that all those ends are covered.
Um, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if I can add, um, I was previously working with, um, our previous city manager in the city of Covington to come up with this type of concept. Um, of course, unfortunately, we weren't able to launch it. Um, but I know during that planning, what we had decided, um, as, uh, Newton County and the city of Covington were gonna partner, what we kind of decided is generally, and not to say all, um, but a lot of high school students, they have their own transportation. And so, we were looking at basically really just kind of like how we do leadership Newton, where we go around to different locations within the county. Um, if we were giving those students a stipend, if they have vehicles, they were able to drive to those sites themselves, that may prevent us from having to buy additional vehicles. Um, and then, of course, they can also, uh, for those who don't have vehicles, they can maybe ride with those who do, that's a part of the program. And they're only traveling here within the county, so we're taking them to places within the county, um, to really kind of see how our government works from a Newton County perspective. Um, so, uh, that may be an option, I'm just putting that out there on the table. Uh, if we wanted to maybe kind of address that expense, because I know in the, previously, uh, when I was partnering with the city of Covington to come up with this concept, that's kind of what we had put in place. Um, so, that's just something to put out there to see if, you know, if the board want to consider that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, guys, listen, we done discussed, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for a motion, um, whether we add four more, or we don't add four more. Um, the county managers already said it's three million dollars in the budget, um, that we can utilize to help fund this. So, I'm, I seek a motion either way. I seek a motion, um, to add four more as the chairman's appointment, or to not add four more to the chairman's appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to leave the vote as we had voted on last week, so that we can maintain the budget of these youth. Um, we are, just to add, we already have the two buses, which will cover, each, each bus that we order is gonna be able to carry fifteen people on each one. So, I, my motion is to keep it the way the vote was last week, where each commissioner appoints four people. And if we want to later on add, where the chairman actually appoints one grade or two, or however it may be, doesn't matter to me, just leave it at the twen- the twenty people.
Is there a second? It's a motion that, uh, it's been a motion by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any more discussion? All in favor? That motion fail? I'm, I'm sorry. All of them, all opposed?
Well, my thoughts are, what, I know you gotta vote, can I make a statement? No? Okay, then I vote against it.
Huh?
No.
Vote against it? Wait, whoa, 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 yeah. You voted against it?
I'm voting.
Commissioner Sanders' motion to leave it as it is. The motion was to leave it as it is.
Are you voting? I'm gonna call it again, guys, y'all, please listen. Commission.
You ain't asked me for a discussion.
I did ask for a discussion. I, I asked for a discussion. The vote, the vote is, Commissioner Sanders made a motion to leave the same, excludes the chair from, in appointments. Commissioner Henderson, second. I call for him, calling for the vote again, any, all in favor? Any opposed? Now, I need a motion, uh, I need another motion. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we add four additional students to this, um, to the youth commission.
From the chair.
From the chair's appointment, so that everybody, all five commissioners and the chair get an appointment, and we are able to allow four more students to be involved in this particular program.
It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion?
Can I ask some discussion?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Is there a rule that says it has to be four people per commissioner?
No.
No, we was just doing it by the budget.
Okay, well, why don't you do three, and then you can add them, and it won't be that big a deal?
It's still twenty, that's still twenty.
Okay, do two.
No, we, we can.
Reduce the number, and you got more money per student.
That's what I said, that's what I said!
Okay, if that's what she said, that makes more sense than anything.
Guys, 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 listen, listen. Hold on, hold on, hold on, listen, listen. Guys, listen, listen, listen. Guys, I promise you I'm not gonna say it again. We're gonna stay in order, or we gonna leave? We're gonna stay in order, or we gonna leave? Yep, continue discussion, Commissioner Cowan, correct? Yes.
The reason I say reduce the number is, I know how working with groups is. Look at this group. Six of us up here, and we can't agree, now, you put twenty people together, what you gonna get? Chaos. I've seen it too many times. I would suggest you reduce the number and have more money per person. My thoughts.
Are you making a subs- is that a?
What?
He says a substitute motion.
Are you making that a substitute motion?
Yes, I am, making a subsequent motion, reduce the number to a more reasonable number. Whatever that number is, I don't know.
So, each commissioner.
But I know one thing, that twenty-four kids is too many.
So, what you saying, um, so what you saying is that you want to make a substitute motion?
Reduce the number to.
Sir.
Two, and then you have the ability to add to that down the road.
So, if, if, if we're thinking about the kids, why, why we don't.
I'd rather, I'd rather have fewer kids and pay them more to be involved, and provide them the laptops or whatever they gotta have, than have a bunch of kids and not have the money for it.
So. Is the motion, each commissioner, including the chair, will app. Is the motion, each commissioner, including the chair, will appoint three children to the youth commission, is that your motion?
I don't care what number it is, it just needs to be less than four, make it, make it two, make it two.
Three, make it three.
Make it three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, motion being made by Commissioner, uh, by Commissioner Calvin and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion?
The motion is that every commissioner, including the chair, appoints three children to the youth commission.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
It passed, three, one, one extension.
The reason why I abstained, because we, we, we went in circles, that's what I said in the beginning, I said that in the beginning, it was at twenty, and I said if we wanted to keep the number down, we as the commission can, can nominate, uh, uh, appoint three and give the chairman the other, if that's he wants to be involved, that's all I said, I was not even excluding our, our leader here, I was just looking at the numbers so we can maintain this program, that's all I care about, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is twelve C, funding needed for operating the warming center with Pastor Led for twenty twenty-three, the month of March.
Thank you, um, so I would, I'll just tell you briefly, I was approached by the city of Covington, um, on today, um, actually yesterday, and I got back with the mayor today, they talked about it at their board meeting last night, um, they wanna know if the county want to partner with them to extend the warming shelter until March thirty-first, March thirty-first, um, and I think those, you have the numbers in front of you, um, so those numbers will be split in half.
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Calvin, uh, second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
We did, I, I, uh, we had just extended, and I'm, and I'm not against for giving more money, but just for, so the public, you know, so that I would like for everybody to know what we're doing, in rather than just we kinda be speaking, kinda some of the realers up here are making motions, second, or whatever the case may be, so what is that number, that, that, that we will have to pay to, to extend it to thirty-first, and what's the city Covington part?
The total cost, uh, from, provided by the Rainbow Community Center Warming Center budget to operate through March thirty-first is thirty-seven thousand seven hundred thirty-six, that will be split evenly between the city and the county, the county's portion will be eighteen thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes, five oh, thank you.
Chairman, the next item is item number twelve D, commissioner would like to apply for a grant.
Patrick.
As y'all are aware, Commissioner Sanders sent an email to the board informing the board that Senator John Osof's office has invited applications for various grant funding opportunities, um, the deadline for these grant opportunities is March seventh, in order to qualify for a grant, the, um, the application materials suggested that you need to have well-defined projects with completed budgets, and I think the request is whether or not to turn Ms. Kennedy loose, your grant writer, to pursue those grant opportunities on behalf of the county.
Mr. Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would also just like to make the board aware, based on the email that we did receive from the office of Senators Osof, the projects that they listed, uh, appear to be more of countywide or large-scale projects, projects such as, there was a water and sewer listed, there were a transit project listed, they were large-scale projects, so I'd just like the board to know, while we all know each district have this, uh, unique needs, we might wanna look at having a project that benefit the entire county.
Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, just to add on, uh, it was sent directly to myself and Commissioner Mason because we went to the NACO convention, and I also forwarded you over, I sent one, I got, received one personally from Senator Warnock's office, so I asked for that to be added on as well, the grant can go up to five million, it is also specific based on the project, not just countywide, it's the same congressional grant that I applied for with the four million, but it was with Congressman Johnson, they all are congressional grants, so they are specified, you can have it for, uh, youth area in, in certain districts, you can do it for mental health, remember I applied for mental health for our youth out of our ARPA funds, and you guys voted it down, our youth are still requesting therapists for our area, it can be applied for that, because they sent back to me actual projects that we comply for, for, per district, it can also be for, uh, uh, schooling, after schooling for certain areas and underserved communities, as well as Commissioner Henderson and I, district are the underserved communities in the area, so there were so many grants that, uh, categories that were not, not just countywide, and so Ms. Shannon, Attorney Shannon also stated that she would meet with myself and my constituents in the area, so we can go over that grant process, because one is due March seventh and the other one's due March tenth, and it's up to five million dollars.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I did also as well receive that email, the five million dollars can be for six different areas, one is for water and sewer projects, it can be for transit projects, um, employment and training project, which is training unemployed individuals to increase their skills and obtain employment and enhancing the skills of incumbent workers to get higher paying jobs, also it can be used for funds for education, uh, which is instructional services, after-school centers, curriculum development, teacher training, acquisition of books and computers, arts education, social and emotional learning activities, full-service community schools and early childhood education, also it can be for health resources and services, uh, an example is limited scope construction, renovation, or capital equipment purchase for facilities for health, mental health, or substance abuse services, training of health professionals, or medical research, also it can be used for community development funds for economic development initiatives, for example rehabbing buildings, clearing blight, et cetera, so it, those six areas, um, can be used, uh, and I'm sure all five districts could actually benefit from this five million dollars, because in all six of those areas, uh, we can find something where all five districts can benefit from this particular five million dollars in all six of those areas, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, my comment wasn't excluding any district, because over years we've been receiving grants and nobody applied for it, that's why I did it last year, so the time is now to move forward, instead of sitting here discussing about who's applying for the grant, what, what district is doing it, the point is, I, I was the one who asked to apply for the grant, and that's why it's on the agenda, so I guess our agenda item, I'm gonna make a motion, I, Elena Sanders, Commissioner Sanders along with our, well, Commissioner Sanders along with our county attorney, not attorney, who's our consultant, to assist us with applying for the grants, and if it wants to be per district or however it may be, because we already discussed it within that, I'm just asking for permission to work with our consultant to apply for a grant, and I'm doing it properly this time, so nobody can say I didn't ask.
Is there a second? She got a mo-, it's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C, um, why can't we have it in a, if we can have it in, in Commissioner Sanders' district, but why can't we bring in the other districts who may want to also share into a particular grant, because I think, um, Commissioner Mason said that countywide, it could be possibly countywide, uh, work with her to establish what grant we may want in each of the districts, I guess, you know, and so, we could cover all of them possibly, I think that, would you, would you, you know, we were talking.
That's why I mentioned Commissioner underserved.
He asked me a question, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know, but it need to come to the chair.
Okay, so may I answer his question, Mr. Chair?
You sure can.
Um, that's why I mentioned underserved communities, because you and I are the only two to have the underserved communities in the county.
Absolutely. So, let me tell you what I think we need to do as a board.
Is there a motion, second, please?
But, it's a discussion, right?
Yeah.
Is it discussion? It's discussion, right? Okay, um, so, I think we need to, since we got Kennedy on board for searching for grants, I think we need to authorize her just to, once we, we, we see grants come across, um, present those grants to the county manager, because he's over, they're, they're over operation, so we'll stay within our formal government, and the county manager work with Ms. Kennedy to pursue those grants.
Mr. Chairman, that grant is due March seventh and March tenth, so has she brought a list to us already, besides the ones I sent over?
You know what, all, all in favor? Commissioner, Commissioner Sanders made a motion, um.
I asked.
Is this a vote?
It's a, this is a vote for, it's a vote for Commissioner Sanders to, it's a grant for, the motion Commissioner Sanders made, you wanna restate it for me?
Yeah, the, the motion was for Commissioner Sanders to work with Ms. Shannon to make application under the grant opportunity that Senator Osof, she, Kennedy, the, the consultant, you, you approved her as your grant writing consultant.
I asked.
All in favor? Any opposed? Man, just vote, any opposed?
I asked, I can get the patient, I can ask, I asked.
This is crazy, man, I ain't never seen this, this is unbelievable.
It needs to be the county manager.
This is unbelievable, any, any, any opposed, any opposed, there's a call, guys, you gotta vote. It fails. Make another motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we allow the.
It's a, it's a motion, guys, listen, you know what? Interrupt again, we going home, all right, we stay on the journey, let's go.